We're going to get started. Um. Court of Appeals meeting for December 16th is called a water. I need to take care of the housekeeping issue. This, this meeting is being recorded by Westford Cat. We ask that everyone use their computer microphones when they are not in use. Although that doesn't apply really to the board. This is an opening for all, for all the panelists who have access to the chat panel. I would like to remind you not to use the function to discuss any of the content of the meeting, but to ask a question or technical issues with the video conferencing platform, and please direct them to the organizers. All votes will be done by roll call. All attendees are muted upon arrival into the meeting platform to reduce unnecessary sounds from disrupting the meeting. If an attendee wishes to contribute a question or comment, they may virtually raise their hand via the platform's control panel, and the chair will recognize and unmute the participant when they can voice their concerns similar to approaching the microphone. Or individuals may submit questions and comments to the chair and staff by utilizing the question function. These will be compiled and included into the hearing at the appropriate portion. Due to limitations of the platform, attendees that accessing, accessing the might, meeting via the telephone number of automated agenda will only be able to listen to the proceedings and will not be able to contribute. Please access the video conference via the link on the agenda, even if you do not have a webcam to participate. Tonight, we have Paul McMillan, Jim Kaziniac, Dave Earl, myself, Jeff Morissette, the Land Use Director, and Matt Salem, the Assistant Planner. That being said. Uh, any general announcements?
Hey Bob, I'm here.
Yeah.
This is Jay.
Jay, welcome aboard. All right.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I would appreciate it if you'd be willing to note for the record that I believe you're designating Mr. Earl to sit for Mr. McKay this evening.
Thank you very much, Mr. Morissette, yes. David, you're in on the, you're in on the busy agenda. Uh, first item is minutes of November 18th. I have one potential correction myself. I believe because it is an inconsistency here. On page two, from forty-nine. Um. Actually, from forty-nine to sixty-six. To my recollection, we approved this hearing, I mean, there's a request from the applicant, and in fact, the minutes state that. But then it also says the applicant made a request to withdraw their variance petition without prejudice. Now, was that, was, was that because it was only a special permit?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, um, the applicant, as I recall, originally applied for a variance petition. It was later determined by the commissioner that a special permit was also a valid path for permitting. And so, once the board granted the special permit, there was no reason to act on the variance petition. And since they applied for it, we, we asked that they withdraw it.
Okay, okay. I, I wondered about that, but I wasn't totally sure. Does anybody else have any additions, corrections, deletions?
No.
If not, then a motion would be in order to approve that submitted.
So move, so move.
Second.
Dave?
Yeah, only, uh, Matt made a correction. I was there.
Oh, thank you. I, I forgot to check the top of that, yeah. All right, is there a motion to approve as amended?
So move.
Yes.
Second.
Dave?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
And I also will vote me affirmative. All right, next item on the agenda is Twenty-Nine Keys Road. This was continued from November 18th. And I believe we have counsel with us tonight. Is that correct?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Good evening. Douglas Deschain, representing Camille Cornell.
You have the floor, counsel.
Thank you, sir. Um. Ms. Cornell is the owner of the property at Twenty-Nine Keys Road. Uh, she is proposing to essentially finish the home, at least from an architectural perspective, by adding a two-level front porch, um, fourteen by forty feet long, uh, and a seven by fourteen foot addition to the front portion of the home. Uh, the addition, as proposed, will be about forty-six feet from the roadway or from the front yard setback, and the porch will be forty-one feet. Fifty feet is required, and therefore, um, we are here seeking a variance to allow for the construction of the home. And, uh, thank you, Matt. Uh, gentlemen, as you can see from this, um, site plan, uh, you can see the proposed front porch to the left, it's sort of shaded a lighter gray. Um, and that again will be forty-one feet from the road, and then you can see the, the circular or semi-circular bump out, uh, which will end up being forty-six feet from the road. Matt, if I could go back, um, to the, um, uh, the first plan, the, um, assesses map, or, yeah, one more. There we go. Uh, gentlemen, you can see I've, I've highlighted the lot in yellow here. Uh, the house sits across from Keys Pond. Um, there is a, a, a neighbor, not directly across the street, but you can see, uh, you know, to the side. Uh, there is a direct abutto to the left side of the home as you look at it. And then the abutto to the right is, is located, uh, you know, some two hundred feet or, nah, hundred and six feet from, um, from the home. Um, Matt, if we could go to that next Google map. And there you go. Um, you can see I've located the home here so that you can get a, I guess, a more realistic view of how this house sits across, uh, from the pond. Matt, can go to the next plan. It'd be great. Thank you so much. Um. This is a picture of the house as it sits today, and again, we're proposing to do this, uh, construction on the front of the home. The house is affected by an extreme topographic hardship. Uh, if any of you have been in that area, you will know, uh, this house essentially sits, uh, up on a large hill. It was built into the hill, uh, such that the first floor of the home sits approximately twenty-seven feet above the elevation of the road. So it is quite a, a steep angle, uh, of the home, uh, and there is certainly a, a topographic hardship. Um, as I said, the applicant desires to complete the home by adding the porch and the bump out, uh, which will complete the design of the home and substantially increase the aesthetic appeal of the home. It'll also allow the homeowner an opportunity to take advantage of the views of the pond afforded by the fact that it sits up on the hill. So they'll actually be able to go out on a deck and enjoy that view and, and oversee the pond. So it's, it's a very reasonable, um, effort in, in doing that. Not allowing the addition obviously will ultimately limit the ability, uh, of the homeowners to enjoy their view and their, their hilltop, our home, and also, uh, will limit the value of the home, um, considerably. Um, as we all know, the intent of the setbacks is to eliminate overcrowding, keep homes pushed back from the street, and to, uh, make sure that we have sufficient spacing between homes. As I mentioned, um, given the elevation of this home, if I measure, and I did measure, from the roadway edge at the road level, if you measure up to the front edge of the deck, it's actually in excess of fifty feet. But we measure front-back setback on a plane. So I, I, when you measure it from the front of that deck, which is up, you know, twenty-seven feet, and you measure it straight across to hit the plane of the road, you only get a forty-one foot measurement. But again, if you're on the road looking up, you have more than fifty feet. So, you know, it satisfies the intent of the bylaw of keeping homes and keeping the view of the home, um, from the street. Um, Matt, if we could go to, uh, the picture of the proposed, uh, fortune, so that I can, uh, I, and gentlemen, as you know, all of this is in your packet, but I, I've tried to coordinate with Matt so he could highlight. So there, gentlemen, is the proposed, um, um, picture of what this will look like when it's done. As you can see, over to the right side, there'll be a circular set of windows. That's the bump out. It will be some forty-six feet from the street, and again, only if you measure it on the flat. And then to the left, you can see the two-level deck. Um, and we actually even have a little person up on the second level so you can see what, how that works. But as you can see, this is a, a dramatic, uh, aesthetic improvement to this home. Uh, it will result certainly in increasing the, not only the value of this home, but it will still certainly add, uh, benefits to the neighborhood as a whole, and, and, and will help to increase values of homes, uh, in the surrounding area. Now, with respect to homes in the surrounding area, uh, I've provided a number of pictures of the, the homes to the immediate, uh, left of the house as you look, and I've taken photos of various homes along Keys Road, um, that abut this property. And as you can see, many of those homes, uh, in fact, do not, uh, satisfy the fifty-foot setback. Uh, this home, the blue one here, is the direct abutto. Um, it's hard for me to give you an exact measurement, but given the fact that the, uh, roadway pavement is set in from the edge of the, um, right-of-way, um, it, it is, uh, reasonable to assume that this is less than fifty feet. Uh, Matt, if, go to the next picture, please. This is a picture of a, um, structure, uh, just down the road. You can actually see it from the Cornell property, and um, again, you can see this property as well within, uh, the fifty-foot setback. Matt, we'll just jump through the next ones. Um, these are the two homes, one over. Um, I, my estimation, they're somewhere in the twenty to twenty-five foot, uh, range of setbacks. Uh, that's the direct abutto. Again, I'm sorry for a repeat. Uh, this home I am very familiar with. It is just up the street, and as you can see, this home actually sits six feet from the, um, from the right-of-way, and the reason I know that is that I lived in that home for eighteen years. Uh, so I'm very familiar with this neighborhood, and, and, and as you know, it, it's around the, around the pond, and you know, most of these homes were smaller camps, so that when they were built, they were all pushed close to the road. So the proposal by the Connels to, you know, retain or obtain nine feet of relief, um, certainly will, will not make, it, it'll still make them, you know, probably the, the home that although not conforming would be the closest to the setback. So, um, this is not inconsistent with the neighborhood. It's not inconsistent with the, uh, abutting properties, and quite frankly, I, I, it's my opinion that this addition will, uh, really do a lot to improve the aesthetics and, and benefit the neighborhood as well. So, um, we would ask your consideration in granting the variance. Um, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have regarding the, uh, the proposal.
Okay. The only question I have, Doug, you want to move that shed off that property line, right?
Yes, um, the building inspector, um, as you know, he put that in his, um, his determination letter. So yes, we're gonna, I, I've talked to my client about moving that onto her property. I believe all, all of this property at one time was all Cornell family, so that's probably why, but it, it is in the best interest of everyone that it be moved. Yes, sir.
Just as a side issue, it really has no bearing, Doug. Is this gal part of the Cornell clan?
Yes, it's.
That's Billy's. Billy's daughter.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, she, she's the original, um, builder of the home.
Oh, is that right?
Yes.
Okay. Are there other questions for the applicant?
Just a comment, Bob, um, and I, I don't know how you feel about it, but, um, typically, we get this sort of thing. That, we just had that one plan there. But typically, if we were to approve this, we reference a series of plans a little more specific for the file. Um, I don't know if we want to look for that or not. Actual, uh, schematic of how this, you know, the dimensions and all that sort of thing. We have that picture that was shown, and we have this, uh, plot plan. But I think typically we get some, uh, design plans of some sort.
Constructual, yeah. Cause that, that front, that front of that house is going to have considerable, uh, changes. Double, double windows instead of single windows, and they look like they're going to be federal windows going all the way down to the floor. And you got some doors there. I mean, the front, we should have plans. That, that's a significant change, especially the bump out.
Yeah, you are right, both of you, that we normally do have other plans. Jeff, let me ask you a question. If the board is inclined to approve this, can we add the caveat that we, we want those plans?
You can, Mr. Chairman. They would certainly require those plans, um, also for purposes of applying for billing permit, but you can, in exercising your approval, require that those plans be provided to you.
You know, I think Paul and Jim are right, that we probably, we probably should have those for the record.
It'd be part of our file, I think, on this case.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, um, and, and certainly, my client will be, um, willing to provide any plans you need, and as was stated, she's going to need them to obtain building permits, but um, just so that I give you a, an answer as to why we don't have them today, um, my client has engaged an architect to design, um, the project, and I provided you the, um, the schematics, or not schematics, but the, um, renderings of what, um, the architect expects this to look like, and that's those pictures showing the white structure with all the windows. And then they did hire a certified surveyor. Yeah, those are the, those are the architectural renderings, okay? So they, obviously, they, they engaged an, um, architect to do that. And then they engaged a civil engineer to do the site plan so that we could show you the setback and, and provide you an opportunity of what this would look like. But in all honesty, my client has not given the architect the green light to, you know, spend the big money to do the detailed construction drawings pending a determination of whether they would get a variance or not, because as you can imagine, the, uh, the cost of, you know, doing those detailed, uh, construction drawings is in tens of thousands of dollars. So by all means, um, we do, my client will have to have those done, and uh, certainly would be happy to provide them to you, but I just wanted to let you understand why, you know, that wasn't done without an understanding of whether the, um, you know, the variance would be granted. Again, we thought that between the site plan, which showed you the exact sizes and setbacks, and then the rendering so that you could see what it would look like, uh, it would at least give the board an opportunity to determine whether this is something they would support. But, uh, so it wasn't done purposely to, to not provide them. It's just they have not been done yet, but we will do them.
I, I know, I know quite well that you will, but I will kind of remind you, Doug, that, you know, generally, these are submitted with a request when they come before us, so. Um, I understand your explanation. Um, are there other questions for the applicant? Is there anyone with us to speak in opposition to this request?
I don't see anything, Mr. Chair.
Okay, is there anyone here to speak in favor of this request? Is the board prepared to?
Mr. Chair, the, I think the homeowner, um, has raised her hand. Um, and if she unmutes herself and just identifies herself as such, she should be able to speak.
I, I suspect my client is in, is essentially responding to the question, Mr. Chairman, whether there's anybody here in support. And so, she's letting you know that she's there for support. I, I will also tell the board, I will also tell the board that, um, I, I did reach out personally to the abutting neighbors to ask i- if they had any questions or concerns about the project, and, you know, offered to provide them answers and, and whatnot. Um, and my client also, um, has discussed this proposal with her abutting neighbors to the left and right. So, um, you know, we did do our due diligence, um, to make sure that the neighbors were aware of what was being done, um, and to offer, you know, any explanation or anything else they might have. So, um, I guess it's not entirely surprising that there's not a lot of, um, questions from abutters.
Okay. Is the board prepared to close the public hearing?
So move.
Second.
Dave?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
And I also will vote me affirmative. So, is there a motion then, um, to approve, approve the variance to allow for the construction of a fourteen by forty second-story deck and a, uh, seven-foot by fourteen-foot addition, uh, that will not meet the front yard setbacks?
Well, I think we also should add the condition of moving the shed as part of this approval.
Okay, yeah. I was going to get to, uh, quote conditions, and that would be one of them, that the shed be moved. The other there is that we will reference the, uh, plot of, uh, the plot plan done by Goldsmith, Preston Ringwall, Inc., on, um, September eighteenth, twenty twenty. And also that the, um, draw, not drawings, I guess, does he, specifics will be, uh?
Construction drawings.
By the client for the record.
Mr. Chairman, excuse me, if I could just make sure that I haven't misspoken. Um, I did see that on my application, it, it says that we were proposing a second-level deck. I, I, I believe I, that was intentioned to say a two-level deck. Because it's two, two levels. I'm sorry. I, my, my error, I apologize.
Doug?
No, no.
Russell wouldn't have made that mistake.
I know, I know. You know, Jim, you get old.
Nice to have you back.
You're not as sharp as you used to be.
Nice to have you back.
All right, is there a motion? Is there a motion, gentlemen?
So move.
So move.
Second.
David?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Paul? Paul, you still with us?
Yeah, you didn't say anything. Yes.
Jay?
Say my name.
Yes.
You're breaking up, Bob.
What's that?
You're, you're breaking up a little bit there.
Okay, and I also will vote me affirmative. Uh, Doug, you know the, uh, procedure and the timeline, so I don't think I need to repeat that, do I, unless I have to for the record, Jeff?
No, sir, and I will provide Mr. Morissette a schedule of getting those drawings done.
Okay. Thank you very much, and Merry Christmas to you.
Thank you, gentlemen. I hope you all have a wonderful holiday and stay safe and healthy.
Yeah, stay safe, Jeff. Thanks, Doug.
Thank you.
Thanks, Doug.
All right, next item on the agenda is, next item on the agenda is Six Assabet Road, an application, uh, of Carol Finn for special permit to allow the construction of a deck with a reduced front yard setback, twenty-two point eight feet, whereas fifty feet is required. Is there a motion to waive the entire reading of public notice?
So move.
Second.
Dave?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
And I also will vote me affirmative. Is there a motion to open a public hearing?
So move.
Second.
Dave?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
And I also will vote me affirmative. All right, um, are you with us, Carol?
Yes, I'm right here.
All right, for the record, for the record, if you will, please let us know what we want, want to do here.
I would like to put a front deck along the front of the house. It will be seven point two feet extending from the front, and it will go twenty-five feet along the front. And it will have stairs coming down from the center, and it'll have railings. It'll also have a gate at the top, double-opening gate.
Okay. It, it appears to be pretty much straightforward. Questions for the applicant, gentlemen?
No.
Seeing, seeing none. Is there anyone with us, uh, opposed to this application? Is there anyone here in support of this application?
Mr. Chairman, if I could just ask our assistant planner, uh, we might have received favorable correspondence. Can you double-check that, Matt? Yes, I was just about to show that on the screen. It was emailed to everybody this afternoon. Um, but we did receive favorable correspondence from, uh, the residents at Ten Assabet Road, um, Barb and John Cornelius. Um, and we will look to include that into the meeting minutes as well.
Okay. Um.
Mr. Chairman.
I won't say a, what, I won't say a question, but kind of a statement. And, and I do this with all due respect, Carol. The, uh, the drawing that you did or someone did, uh, was, was not that clear. And, and, you know, there could have been a little bit more information with it, but that's just in hindsight, I guess.
Well, I, I would think the same thing applies to her as we did with, uh, Camille. Should have, should have a rendering in the drawings, you know, the architectural drawings there to show, show the construction. There's no measurements, no nothing other than the fact that where the footings are going.
Yeah.
It's on the second page, I think. It's just studs. Come out too clear as a copy, but. Nothing, nothing about the ceiling or anything. It's just the studs. On the floor, the stringers.
You know, I guess, I guess, I guess that actually is a decent segue, um, to express to Matt. You there?
Yes, I am, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, on these applications, I think you know what we want. Uh, when they come in like this, you should demand something a little bit more aggressive.
Okay. Well noted.
Is the, uh, board prepared to close the public hearing?
Yes.
Yes. Yep.
Okay, I think, Dave?
Yes, contention on getting the plan.
Okay, the, good point, good point. Jim?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
And I also will vote me affirmative. We will, we do need to reference, um, shame on me here, I hate this webinar. Uh, we need. Yeah.
Think I lost track of something. Did the board actually make a motion to close the public hearing?
No, we all just said yes. Jeff's right, we didn't.
No, I didn't. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So move.
Second.
Dave?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
And I also will vote me affirmative. Okay, I need to also reference the plot plan done, done by Stamsky and McNary on October seventh, twenty twenty. Um, and as Dave said, uh, we need a set of plans with, with these two. Is there, uh, is there a motion to, uh, approve the special permit?
So move.
Second.
Dave?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
And I also will vote me affirmative. Carol, the, um, the planner has fourteen days to write the decision. That has to be registered with the town clerk and the registry of deeds. And then anyone has twenty days beyond that to appeal our decision. And then anyone has twenty days beyond that to appeal our decision. So generally people wait till that timeframe is all done before they put a shovel on the ground.
Sounds good.
Okay. Thank you very much and Merry Christmas.
All right.
Have a good holiday.
Thank you.
Hey, Bob, before we leave this plan here, you, you see lot, the, the, on that plot plan, Lot thirty-three, right there off of Vinebrook Road, I have a question here. See, isn't that a common gra, area with those, uh, long thin areas out? Isn't that Vinebrook Estates, something? Isn't that a, a building in one, in the middle of one of them, right there at thirty-three?
Where are you looking, Paul?
Right in, see at the corner of Vinebrook, there's a thirty-three, the lot.
No, no, but I don't see, I don't see what piece of paper you're looking at.
Oh, it's, it's the, it's the, um, street plan with the houses on it, right there.
Yeah.
Thirty-three, right in the corner, right, right above the V in Vinebrook there.
Okay, I can see it now, yeah?
See that, see that little square on, isn't that, isn't that all common land, what they call Vinebrook Estates, a common area or whatever it is?
It looks like it could be, yeah.
And that's right in the middle of the trail. Not that, not, it has nothing to do with the, the applicant, it's just, how do they get away with that?
Oh, oh, I see what you mean.
Are you talking about the land behind the subject property?
Down from it.
No, down from it. See, see the one that says thirty-three, Jeff?
Yeah. Yeah, I see that.
Is that some, is that somebody's house that's in the middle? What is that, a path, Paul?
Well, see on all the streets, they come in off the street, all those long passes, like four of them. And that's a, that's a common area in the back, in the middle of all of them. It's like a triangle.
Yeah. So you're wondering.
I was, I was just curious, how can they be in a common land like that?
Well, so first of all, we, we can't tell from a GIS map if it's actually encroaching.
I think that's a good Christmas project, though, Jeff.
Sure.
On your break. Between.
I don't think Carol would talk her, her mic.
Actually, I think it's, uh, Okay, um, general business. We have a request for an extension of time to relocate or remove an existing non-conforming shed from, uh, Marsha Castor, I guess it is. What's the board, what's the board's feeling on this?
Did we hear from the abutters?
Yeah, yes, um, this is Craig and, um, appreciate you guys' time. Thank you, guys, for giving us the time. When we went through this, obviously, we're not used to all this, so I apologize. I know we signed it and I know when we look at the paperwork, we, there was, there was agreement and I apologize that, for that. I actually thought from our meeting, and we talked about the lake being the front and the back and all this, that we were gonna have someone come by and take a look at the shed to determine where the best place for the shed would be because, you know, we can't have a garage or anything. And, um, I didn't realize we were under the pressure of actually removing it right away. I mean, if, if the decision is there is no place for a shed on that property, I mean, obviously, we're gonna move it because that's what we agreed to, but, um, I think we also talked about the shed not being in the front yard because of, um, neighbors and, and, and all that. Um, because it doesn't look well. Um, obviously, we would have to store our snow blowers and all that stuff somewhere and, you know, I'd hate to use a park sign to keep them protected. Another thing is just listening to the previous one, I know they used a lot of examples from the neighbors and the street. And, you know, just on our street, I want to tell you, probably half the houses on the, more than half the houses sheds on, you know, the same as we do. Um, and we have spoken to all the neighbors, all the neighbors are fine with it. Uh, but anyways, we, we'd like to keep the shed, but if we can't, we'd like to extend it, you know, at least until the occupancy permit is, is ready to be done. But our, our first choice is we'd like to keep it because we have, we have snow blowers and lawn mowers and, and things like that, that we need to keep protected. There really isn't another place for it, so anyways, that's, that's it. And if not, we're, we're asking to extend it to the occupancy permit.
A couple of, couple of questions, um, and the first really is for anybody, not, not, not just the applicant. Um, how did we get involved? Cause I don't have the map or anything or a lot, the plot plan in front of me. How did we get involved with the shed to begin with? Does anybody remember?
Mr. Chairman, I might, might be able to answer that and Matt might be able to chime in. So when our building commissioner or planning staff reviews a zoning board application, if they note any zoning issues or violations, they try to bring it to the board's attention before the board would grant perhaps additional relief that they should make right any existing zoning issues at that time. Like tonight, there was a shed that was encroaching. Um, and so we brought it to the board's attention and you, I believe, incorporated the condition of approval that said you gotta move or move that shed to be compliant as part of this overall approval. So that at the end of the day, the zoning board is done with a, a property, it's either closer to conforming with zoning or it's consistent with whatever relief you determined to grant.
Okay, the second part of that question then, in light of that, is it, is it, is it totally on your property now or not?
Yes, it is totally on our property. It's just in the front yard.
Right on the line, though?
It's, it's, it's on, on the side. It's, it's not right on the line. It's just, I think the concern was that it was in a front, in the front street side and that gra, uh, sheds aren't supposed to be street side. And, and, and we're on a lake. And so that's why there's not any room in the lake and the conservation committee and stuff like that. That's why they're all on our, they're all on the street side.
I mean, I guess what I'm trying to do here is I know sheds are very valuable to a lot of homeowners. So we didn't tell him how much he had to move it, Jeff, or anything, just that he had to move it?
So if, if specific relief is not granted, uh, by the zoning board for setbacks, they would have to move it to be compliant with the zoning bylaw requirements?
Which is what it says in our conditions. Condition number two, which we wrote, which we issued, said it had to be located within ninety days, had to comply with zoning requirements. We gave him ninety days to figure out how to fit it without needing.
Or take it down.
Or take it down. Fit it without needing relief or take it down was the way we left it and do it within ninety days. So I don't know that, I mean, be in the middle of winter here and a foot of snow coming tomorrow. They're up against, ninety days is expired, I guess. Um, I, I, I see no problem giving them more time to figure it out and to comply with this either. You know, I don't think we need to alter any, condition number two. I think we just could give them an extension.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that.
No, I don't either.
If it's, if it's a lake property, you know, you want stuff in place for the summer season.
Well.
In the middle of winter, the lake's frozen and no one's out. Probably not a big deal.
What, uh, what's the board inclined to do? Because this is New England, should we let it go to the end of April?
I, I'd support that.
Yeah, I, I, you know, being from around that area, Bob, too, a lot of the schedule in the, in the street side, lot by the lake where, or the backyard, typically the, the front yard is the backyard of a lake. So it's funny, it's somewhat consistent what we, when I'm walking around that area, what it was. And I, I would extend it to, at least till April, till we could try to figure it out, so.
All those lots are so narrow, it's incredible. So, I mean, they don't have any.
Could I, I, the, the way how I remembered it from the last meeting, and, and like I said, I don't do this often and I could definitely have it wrong. I thought somebody was gonna come by and help us determine where we could put it, right? And, and because, you know, we, I mean, the whole purpose of this is, is it, not nice looking for the neighbors. And I, and, and we're gonna have, we're gonna have a need to keep things covered. And, and I don't wanna lose or something like that. Is it possible to have someone come by and help us decide the best place for it? Um, I mean, I
Like no shed at all?
We, we have done that in the past and I, I for one certainly don't have a problem with either sending the building commissioner or code enforcer down there to give you a hand. How's the rest of the board feel about that?
Yeah, I really appreciate that. That would be a great value to, to hear, to hear that from it.
Okay.
I mean, he knows exact, the exact lot lines, though. I mean, somebody's gotta determine the exact location of the lot lines to be able to measure distances. So if you can't start with that, then it's still a guesswork.
Well, we had the site work done because we're building a house. The house is knocked down.
Okay, so you know that, you know, if you, if you mark the lines exactly, so when somebody comes out, they'll be able to pick it from there. Be helpful, I would say. Not even helpful, probably essential.
Yeah, well, there, there's fences on that side of the land that marks it too, uh, which, a fence in, you know, going between the two, to, to, to two lots, but.
Is that a chain link?
It's a white plastic fence.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I might suggest, it sounds like a more amenable granting extension, perhaps through the end of April. And I think the building commissioner could provide, uh, the property owner with what the restrictions are for where they can site a shed. And if they can't find an area that they could still come back to this board. But for now, maybe they should be provided where they could put it legally. And if that doesn't work to them, then they, you know, work through the building commissioner and perhaps come back to this board.
Absolutely, absolutely. All right, is there, is there a motion to approve the re, uh, the extension request to the end of April?
So move.
With, with the language that, uh, Jeff just put in there?
So move.
Second.
Dave?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
And I will also vote me affirmative. All right, hopefully that can get straightened out by the end of April, uh. Sure.
Thank you, thank you for your cooperation or help in, in this matter. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Good luck. Um, I believe that is it, Jeffrey?
There's some, uh, courtesy points in the packet. It happens with most, uh, forty Bs. It's just an accounting of the cost to show that the applicant's not, uh, obtaining more profit than they should from an affordable housing project. Everything appears to be in order as documented by Mass Housing. And this is just your packet for courtesy. Questions or wanted to offer comments before you?
Okay, I, I don't have any. Do we need to have a motion to accept the report or not?
You don't.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions or comments relative to it?
No.
No.
Um, is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
Okay, uh, Dave?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
I also will vote me affirmative and I wish everybody a Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
You and yours.
The only comment I have, the only comment I have, Bob, is we should meet at Burton's next year at the same time, so.
Sounds like a plan, Jay.
Hey, Jay, Jay, did you sign home?
Uh, yes, that's the good news, yeah, so he's home.
Right, yeah, great.
Merry Christmas, everyone.
Merry Christmas.
Enjoy the holidays. Stay safe.
Thanks.
Thank you.